Okay, at this time, we're actually calling a separate, not the village board meeting, but we're calling the Board of Review meeting to order. This is a meeting to adjourn. There's a state law that says that we have to meet by a certain time. So we meet and then we adjourn. So we've taken care of that state law requirement and then they allow us to meet at a later time. So with that being said, do you have the names you need to call?
I do.
Okay, so with that being said, may we have a roll call for Board of Review?
Jeff Fannerstall.
Here.
Village manager Ryan Bailey.
Here.
Trustee Walsh Leger.
Here.
And myself clerk Sandy Polisello, present. We are in need of one more member, but we will, that is the end and we will fill that.
We have quorum. We will be filling in with a citizen member. If anybody's interested, don't hesitate to contact me or the village and they'll, but if it is something that you'd like to let us know. So with that, we do have a quorum. So this meeting is in order. There is only one item of business and that is to adjourn until June 12th, 2024 at 5:00 PM.
I'll make a motion to adjourn until June 12th at 5 o'clock.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn this meeting until June 12th, 2024 at 5:00 PM. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Because we just made the motion to adjourn until June 12th, we don't have to make any more motions. Motions because we just adjourned. So now we will start the village board meeting. I know, we didn't make that law, the state did, so don't. So now we will begin the village board meeting. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee DeBoer.
Here.
Tretschel.
Here.
Pfeiffer.
Here.
President Fannerstall.
Here.
Trustee Walsh Leger.
Here.
Connor.
Here.
Hallquist.
Here.
If you'd all rise for the pledge of allegiance led by trustee Hallquist.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Now we have public comments. Anybody that's here that would like to come and speak in public comments, please move towards the podium and you can go and speak.
Thank you.
And please give your name and address.
Yes, sir. My name is Michael Thurston. My address is 1263 Maryhill Circle here in Heartland, Wisconsin. So I really appreciate this opportunity to speak to you all, to address this board. I've been trying to make my way around to all the different late country municipalities and we've got a full house here tonight, so I'll try to keep it short. My name is Mike Thurston. I'm a deputy DA here in Waukesha County. I supervise our crimes against kids and women. I just want to, I'm trying to make it around all of our local leadership, all of our local boards to emphasize the importance of August 13th. August 13th, we have a DA primary. In my opinion, humbly, one of the most important, important races we have here in Waukesha County. My boss DA Sue Opper, longtime DA, longtime ADA is retiring and there's an open seat. I think I'd be remiss to say, and I know a lot of the public may feel this way, there is change in the air. We have a lot of challenges coming our way from our eastern neighbors. We've gotten, in fact, in Maryhill Circle, we had some break-ins in our subdivision. My understanding is there, I'm not going to talk about open investigations, chief, but my understanding is they are not from around here. I have experienced prosecuting cases down on the bowels of Atlanta for five years. Prosecuted cases in Milwaukee. I now supervise our sensitive crimes unit. I am honored. I am deeply humbled by the support of all of our police chiefs. I have all their endorsements. I have the endorsement of our current sheriff, two prior sheriffs. I just want to just emphasize the importance of this August 13th date. We've been assembling a team of really grizzled, experienced prosecutors from Milwaukee and elsewhere, but I really fear that's in jeopardy come August 13th if we go sideways. I really appreciate everybody's violent support here. I really appreciate all the work that you guys do and thanks for the opportunity to speak. Thanks so much, President.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did you have anything that you needed to hand to the board? If not, then you can.
You don't mind, I've just got some literature. Set it aside over to the side. I don't, I don't mean to take anybody's time, but I'll just set it out here if anybody's interested.
Sure.
Thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else that would like to speak in public comments? Be on Zoom.
Those people.
Last call for anybody that wants to speak. All right, now we do have, I might as well just make this aware right away. We have someone in attendance. Which item is it that we have where they would prefer to be? Okay. I think that it's been requested, I'm leaving this up to the board, I just want you guys to know it's been requested. So item 11, that presentation, I'm sorry, review and consideration of the building needs assessment study agreement with Keller, Inc. It's been requested that they could go sooner in the meeting. They are absolutely willing to wait, but just simply wanted to know if it was possible. We would need to suspend the rules by that, doing that, but that's totally up to the board. I just want you to know that request was put in.
I'll make a motion that we suspend the rules.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to suspend the rules. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. We would need a.
I'll make a motion that we move number 11 up to the first item of discussion.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to move item 11, which is review and consideration of building needs assessment study agreement with Keller, Inc., to the first item that we discussed tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. So item 11 is now 1A and that will be a review and consideration of the building needs assessment study agreement with Keller, Inc.
All right, so last time we met with the village board about building needs analysis, you kind of tasked us with moving forward, all of the staff for the police department, recreation department, fire department, and administration met with and some of the other staff, but it shrunk down to a smaller group. Met with four different companies and project management and looking at what to do about our future. The best way to move forward with getting an idea of what we have now, what our future might look like in some possible locations, things of that nature. Staff settled on Keller and he is here if you want to give a little background of what you do, what you, what this process looks like and why you're the right person for the job.
Well, I appreciate it. Thank you for moving things around a little bit. So my name is Devin Flanagan. I'm a project manager at Keller. My counterpart could not make it tonight, but that's all right. So what I do at Keller, I work on municipal projects, a lot of fire, a lot of EMS, a lot of police, of public safety, variety of other things, whether it be libraries, schools, city centers, public works. And what our goal is to do is to help facilitate a building project from where you are today all the way to handing in the key. Now, this is the very preliminary aspect of it, so this is getting to a point where you can move forward. So what our focus is, is a needs assessment, preliminary plans, and a budget. What, you know, again, there's usually an architect here along for the ride. So he does a lot of the needs assessment, design, focusing on how to put this building project together. My portion is the budgeting and trying to facilitate the avenue. So municipal projects, there is no one size fits all. You're building a unique prototype that's never been built in this community before. So every process is a little different, whether it be the board updates, whether it be presentations of community, community engagements, funding, a lot of different discussions. But my role is to help facilitate that process, to leave no stones left unturned, to make it simple, straightforward, so we can get there. Some projects can take six to 12 months. Some projects can take five years. There is no dead set, there's no deadline per se. Obviously, I think everyone would prefer more on the former than the latter. However, we're here to do whatever it takes. And going in a path that makes sense, working with staff, getting feedback, and then keeping the board updated with our findings, looking for input from the board, and to continue that process. So with every process, there's a whole bunch of work, presentation, feedback, and then you maneuver a little bit. And you keep going down this path. There's no, you know, here we are today, we're going to force you to go this way. No. We're going to lay out the facts. We're going to highly encourage some things, but at the end of the day, you're the boss, so we're here to help you get to wherever we're going. That was a quick version.
Yeah, so as you know, we had a previous building needs analysis study. We feel that Keller is the one that actually can put something together that will look at all of the sites, every intimate aspect of it, the costs associated with upgrading facilities or what it would take, and then some possible locations if we, if we would look elsewhere. So again, the current ask is this would be a $2,500 not to exceed fee, which would get you the preliminary project review, the architectural programming, and the preliminary site design. Obviously Keller's desire, if we would end up going forward with a building, with buildings, that they would be the project manager. When he spoke to us, they bid out all of that work to generally to try and get local businesses, local people who do the work. But right now, the ask is just to get us to phase that step three, the design development, right before that and come back to the board with hopefully some better options and items than we had previously. So.
Anybody have questions? I have one. Whatever you bring forward, are you going to bring a Lamborghini plan?
No, I'm keeping that, I'll park it out back.
Good, thank you.
We expressed that, yeah.
Good. It sounds like you have been forewarned.
So I used to just say, well, I'm here to, with the architect, to do budgeting for years and years. And the more challenges that I was faced with, the more I started to realize that the path you get there is arguably far more difficult than whether it's funding or plan or sites. So I've really leaned into trying to, and I don't know, maybe it's a good thing or a bad thing, they're just more complex. So more sites, more issues, more departments, working with municipalities that have, you know, depleted buildings all across the board. They don't know what to do and they're trying to, they don't know what to do with all the departments. Buildings are falling apart. They got a couple sites and they're all terrible and they got no money and here you go, Devin, figure it out. So I think that's right up our alleyway. Trying to look into everything and to make sure that, again, we're not leaving any stones unturned and we can facilitate a project that makes sense. You have a budget here. We work with primarily towns, villages, and small cities. We're not the city of Madison, we're not the city of Milwaukee. I'm sorry, we're just not building the fancy elaborate buildings. And I expressed that very early on. We're just not that company. We can do something with the budget you have and to make it work and to look down the road and to make this community better.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
I think we would need a vote to move forward with that if someone wanted to make that motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the building needs assessment study agreement with Keller, Incorporated.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the building needs assessment study agreement with Keller, Inc. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Appreciate it.
Now we have consideration of village board minutes from the April 22nd, 2024 meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the village board minutes of April 22nd, 2024.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the April 22nd meeting. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Now we got items, we have items related to vouchers. We have contractors' application for payment number one, 2024 utilities program for $182,065.75.
Well, American Sewers looking for their first payment for the village's utility contract this year. That's all the work that's being done on cottonwood and River Reserve subdivision right now. So staff recommends a payment of $182,065.75 to American Sewer.
I'll make a motion that we approve payment number one for the 2024 utilities program for $182,065.75.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the payment number one for the contractor's application for the 2024 utilities program for $182,065.75. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Now we can, we have a consideration of vouchers for payments in the amount of $837,558.23.
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers in the amount of $837,558.23.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the vouchers in the amount of $837,558.23. Go ahead.
I have a question, Andy. On library, there was a charge for $3,000 for self-checkout system, the annual fee?
Yep.
Is that the only fee and it's an annual fee, correct?
It's the only fee for Envisionware, which runs our self-checkout machines, but on top of that, it also controls our RFID technology. So it's not just self-checkout, it's for a few other bits of software and hardware as well, but it is one yearly fee.
Is a self-checkout just one counter or one area or is there two?
We have two. We have a kiosk across from circulation desk and we have a like tabletop self-checkout machine in the kids' area.
Thank you.
Yep.
That's all.
Anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Now we have items related to licenses and permits. We have a consideration of restricted species permit application. Tyler and Stacy Semrad at 519 Buckingham Way. If I pronounce the last name wrong, I apologize. Are they in attendance? If you want to just come forward just in case, I don't know if anybody has any questions, but if you want to just give a brief, very brief explanation of what you're requesting.
So yeah, our family would like to get some chickens. I have two small children, just trying to become more like self-sustaining and we got garden plots going up in the backyard and working on building a coop and a run and my little ones just love animals and stuff, so just trying to move forward, become more self-sustaining and yeah.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
I noticed in your description, it said you have two dogs and two cats.
Yes.
Are the dogs licensed?
What do you mean by licensed?
Do you have a village license for each dog?
I don't think so.
Do you own your house?
We do, yeah.
Okay, because it comes with your property taxes every year.
Okay. It's, it's, we, with property taxes, they're, they, our insurance knows about our dogs if that's how you would license them.
In the municipality, dogs are required to be licensed, so if you just go to our website or stop down, we just need the vaccination record.
Okay, I didn't realize that.
To issue licenses for the dogs.
Sure, sure. We can get right on that.
And my next question was that the coop, how far is that from the property lot line?
It is in the back left.
I see the picture here.
Corner. We have an old shed there that was kind of falling apart and I spent a lot of time like insulating it and kind of rebuilding it. And it's kind of back corner, it's like everyone's back corner of their lot, basically.
But you don't know how far it is from the lot line?
It, the.
The reason I'm asking, it must be five feet from the lot line.
Okay.
By regulation, so you need to make sure it's five feet.
Sure, yep.
Okay? And that's all I have.
Okay.
I'd make a motion that we approve restricted species permit for Tyler and Stacy Semrad at 519 Buckingham Way.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the restricted species permit for Tyler and Stacy Semrad at 519 Buckingham Way. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Just from the discussion, I would keep it five feet off the lot line and.
I got you.
Contact the village on the permitting of the dogs.
I'll get right on that.
Thank you.
Thank you guys very much.
Yep, have a good one. Now we have a review and possible action of restricted species permit that was issued May 8th, 2023 for Marcos Lara, 329 Prospect Avenue.
Real quick with this one, it was 12 chickens. The board just asked that we come back because we've not had 12 chickens and we've had no police issues, no complaints. It sounds like they've, there's been no issues with them, but go ahead.
So they're just back again to check in?
Yeah, you guys require that they come back in a year or two, whether you wanted just to make sure that the restricted species, because it was 12 chickens, so.
Chief, how many complaints?
Zero for the chickens. We had like a bark and daw complaint once or something like that.
Yeah, that was their neighbor.
Yep.
Yeah.
But nothing for the chickens.
Okay, just wanted to verify.
Are your rabbits licensed or do you have a species license for the rabbits?
We have one rabbit.
Oh, it said two in the outline here.
One of them died.
Oh, okay.
But they're not outdoors, they're, they're only indoors. Or it's only indoors? I don't know if that makes.
But you don't have them licensed though?
No.
Okay. That's what I didn't know.
That was probably the restricted species.
So do we want to review this again next year or just let it slide on the, on the motion for continuum?
On me, I would say let's go, if all of a sudden they get complaints, we'll let them know that, I mean, I don't know what the exact right thing to do is, if there hasn't been complaints yet.
Well, if there's no complaints, I'd hate to have them show up again.
I agree, I agree. No, if there's multiple complaints, all of a sudden, you know, I don't think you need to show up.
I agree with trustee Hallquist.
Am I correct on that, chief?
No problem.
Am I correct on that?
Neighbor says it's good too.
No, with anything on these restricted species or even as you've seen in the past with dogs and cat issues that arise, we do bring those to the board if it's a problem when it becomes a part of the restricted species to renew or to not renew. So I think if it does become a problem, you definitely would hear something from me in the future, but as of right now, we've had zero complaints for particularly the chickens. So we would be able to, if there's issues, then he would tell us to put it on the agenda and then we discuss it at that time, but right now, if I make a motion to just prove it, he doesn't have to come back?
I believe that's correct. Once he has that permit, that just keeps on rolling through.
Okay. Okay, well then I'll make a motion to just prove it.
Okay, well then I'll make a motion to approve the restricted species permit, um, to Marcos Lara, three twenty-nine Prospect Avenue and, um, only needs to come back if there's issues.
Next.
It's been moved and seconded to, uh, to approve the restricted species permit, uh, for Marcos Lara at three two nine Prospect Avenue. Uh, so at this time, it just becomes, it'll be just like any other restricted species permit. No need to come back unless there's issues. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Uh, thank you very much for coming, I do want to say thanks to the board for getting that on the agenda, those are things that used to uh, uh, it was no one's fault, but they used to not come back up. You know, when we said, hey, in a year we want it on, it would just get lost in the shuffle, so good, kudos to you guys, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, we now have, uh, we have items that were referred from the May sixth, twenty twenty-four Park and Recreation Board meeting, this is discussion and consideration of Wisconsin Athletic Club, club special event, this is goat yoga in Nixon Park, June ninth, twenty twenty-four, I do not believe this is the first time that we're having goat yoga in Nixon Park.
Second annual, and I know Katie's here in case you guys have any questions, but this went off really well last year and they're just looking to, um, have this event go hopefully annually in the park. They have a great turnout, sells out pretty quick for them, so.
I think last year we didn't realize they were just such little goats.
Little baby goats, yes, they're cute and it's fenced, they bring their own fence setup, tear down really quick and easy, um, all contained and, um, uh, yeah.
Do, one question for you, if you could. No, I only have one question, but if it, if we went through last year, I'm sure it's gonna be fine, but it's, it's one that has to be asked.
I know.
Anything that the goats might on their unwillingly try to leave behind, is that all cleared out?
Their pellets, yeah, um, they're, the goat owner, baby goat owner will be there, again, they will be fenced in, so there will be like a little cleanup crew, so don't worry about that.
I'm not even, I just wanted to make sure, cause I could just see that complaint, be like, oh my God, they had the goats and I snapped it.
I know, but they're so cute that we'll all just forgive them, so it's fine, but no, yes, there will be a cleanup crew.
And capacity is forty, right?
Uh, thirty-five, actually.
Thirty-five?
Thirty-five people or thirty-five goats?
Thirty-five people, so sign up early.
Okay.
Yeah, start, start signing up, so yeah, thirty-five and then obviously like I'll be there, it's like employees will like be there, but for participants, we're, uh, a max of thirty-five.
To sign up, what do people sign up through the rec department?
So this is through the WAC, so you, you can do, but they do members and non-members, so you can participate with that by calling the WAC.
Wonderful.
Um, WAC plus app, actually, so if you have the WAC plus app, you're good to go, if you're a member, you already have, uh, in there, you already have a profile, but if you're a non-member, you have to sign, sign up for one. But yeah, come join us, it'll be fun. Yeah.
I'll make a motion that we approve goat yoga in Nixon Park for June ninth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve goat yoga for June, was that June ninth? June ninth, twenty twenty-four at Nixon Park. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That motion is, uh, I just lost my brain for a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries.
He was so excited.
I know, you must sign up now.
He's gonna be the first one to sign up.
Wait, just wait, go on.
I'm thinking of my sisters and my nieces that all of a sudden they're like, oh my God, this was the coolest thing and there's like a goat on her back while she's doing yoga and I'm, I just could not understand the excitement, but it'll be fun, maybe I'll come and take a look.
Yeah, come, come see it, come see it.
I'll check it out.
Awesome, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we got other, I, we have other items for consideration, we have review and consideration of revisions to, uh, the cemetery rules.
So from baby goats to the cemetery. Um, so basically the changes that are being made to the cemetery, um, rules are just kind of, uh, brush up, um, general housekeeping items on, on here, um, nothing really too major, we changed the date, um, of decorations to be picked up from April first to the fifteenth, we did that a little earlier ahead of time to, uh, get a jumpstart on brush pickups, so we're not missing all the cemeteries during brush pickup, that's pretty a labor-intensive time for us. Um, another portion down there on section G, uh, is, uh, kind of going against one of the first rules. So once again, there's nothing really to earth-shattering here, just basically saying that we're not responsible for any damaged items in a cemetery. Um, one of the biggest changes that we're making are revisions that we're requesting, um, is a compliant monument or marker must be installed within one year of interment or proof must be shown that payments are being made towards such a monument. Um, that's just going back to the fact that we have a lot of, uh, people that have been buried up there and we don't have a monument marking those. That's why we just paid all that money we did for the radar on the cemeteries, um, so just keeping a better record of that. And then granite or concrete bays must be within four inches thick, so, um, other than that, nothing too earth-shattering. Sandy had some things for the purchase and ownership of plots, cause she handles that portion of it.
Right, under, um, six and seven, um, just fixed a little bit of the language there. Um, we are, tr- there are transfers allowed, um, for the deeds for, for the plots, the graves. Um, we will be proposing a tran- a small transfer fee of forty dollars. Um, the fees we will discuss at the next, um, village board meeting, um, fees need to be amended by a resolution, so um, a small transfer fee will come forward in a resolution and we will also be discussing a fee increase. Um, but that is at the next meeting again.
May I ask a question on that?
Yep.
So. Is there any rules guiding them that that can only just go to their heirs? Or could they, like, let's say I owned a plot and all of a sudden I'm moving from Heartland and, I'm just using names here, but let's say I'm like, hey, I can save Tim some money because in ten years, let's say the fee goes up and I'm like, hey, Tim, do you want to get mine, it's only forty bucks and we get mine, but the rate's gone up four hundred bucks.
If you're alive, you can transfer it to anybody. But if you're already deceased, it's an heir.
No, you know what, okay.
That needs to provide proof of airship and a small fee, um, is just requested, it takes a lot of time to go through that process. Um, if, if the grave owner is deceased, um, there needs to be notarized statements by all the other heirs in agreement of that, so it's a lot of paperwork.
Let's take it as if I was alive, so you're right, not an heir, cause I'm on the right side of the dirt, but I'm saying, so.
You can.
Transfer to anyone.
Anybody you like, yes.
Okay.
Except the village.
And I'm not being, I'm not picking, I'm saying I should have caught this earlier, but all of a sudden I'm like, realistically, if someone came in with a bucket of money and we're gonna end up raising our fee, you know what I mean, where all of a sudden we're four hundred higher than it is right now, you could just be sitting there doling those out. Cause as they sell out, they'll get more expensive, but this is good wording for now, we'll look at it some other time and have some fun at a board meeting. Now, or I'll be gone.
We bring them back to the village, is that what you mean?
No, once we sell it, they can sell to other people.
Yeah, we, we wouldn't per- we don't purchase them back, um.
I think that's a state law, Ian.
Is it?
We went through that with somebody once.
So this is now just being updated from nineteen eighty-seven, is that correct?
No, twenty fourteen was the last time this was revised, yeah.
Twenty fourteen. Oh, okay. And then I do have a question for you, how much, how much stuff, memorial stuff do you have to pick up every spring?
A good amount, I would say at least to pick up load or two. Yeah, wreaths and everything like that is kind of the big thing, so.
Just curious.
I'll make a motion that we approve the revisions to the cemetery rules.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the revisions to the cemetery rules. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Now we have the presentation of the twenty twenty-three consumer confidence report.
Okay, uh, the annual consumer confidence water report, CCR has been prepared for the twenty twenty-three year, this is a DNR requirement for all water utilities throughout the state, the village publishes the CCR early into following year because it needs to complete the year's testing results by the end of December. In the report, this document, or documents the water testing and results of the Heartland Water System for last year, twenty twenty-three. And it also explains the water pumping totals and brief explanation of backflow and cross-connection. So if you look at the, the report, um, itself, um, this report is designed to inform you about the quality of drinking water, the water supplied meets all EPA slash DNR requirements for drinking water. Um, kind of gives you a brief, brief overview of all the wells that we have in the village. So the village obtains its drinking water from five, uh, drilled ground wall, groundwater wells, each of these wells is finished in shallow sand and, uh, gravel aquifer. We have ten employees that are certified water operators that we're proud of. Kind of more on the stats of the village, uh, utility, the village water utility has fifty-nine point three-five miles of water mains, three thousand two hundred and six water meters, six hundred eighty-eight fire hydrants, one thousand six hundred sixty-one street valves and pumped just, uh, over three hundred and forty, three hundred and fifty-four million gallons of water in twenty twenty-three. Um, three dollars and forty-six cents was the cost per thousand gallons of water. And, uh, the village completes ten mandatory caliform tests monthly. Yeah, and then the, the next portion of it, it just kind of goes into more so what the consumers can do, uh, in their own house, it's goes through cross-connections and what possible types of cross-connections could be in your personal household. The cross-connection is actually where, uh, water from within the house can actually go back into, uh, the, the utility itself, so it gives you things to look out for that, we do that ourselves when we change out meters. Uh, in residence home, we look for those and we also contract out, uh, for cross-connections with, um, our commercial properties as well.
Hate to put you on the spot, what's our hardness level, do you know?
What's our what?
The hardness, a lot of people always ask, I think that's somewhere in here, isn't it, that for their water softeners?
Really hard.
Eighteen and twenty-two?
Yeah.
Okay. Just, that'll help people with their water softeners to set it to that level of eighteen to twenty-two.
Yep, yeah, and if anyone has any questions with, uh, their water, they can either reach out to me or Jake Schlefer with the utility department here. Um, this is posted on the village website and this was also published in the rec department guide that was, uh, sent out to all the residents in the village and that's a requirement.
For the public as well, how often is the water tested?
Depends on what testing you're talking about.
I know you guys are always sending samples in, like every week.
We do like ten back tea samples every month, same, same locations every month, so. Ten per month for back tea.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, now we have review and consideration of the library roofing contract.
Yes. I want to apologize first and foremost, I didn't realize we were supposed to have like this executive summary sheet in the packet. So I don't know if all of you reviewed the, uh, three proposals, but long story short, the roof was originally installed in nineteen ninety-four. The shelf life of the roof that we currently have in our building is anywhere from twenty-five to thirty years. Uh, last February, we had a major leak in the roof that led to the loss of some library materials. And we also had to close the library down for a little bit, so last summer, um, we approved getting a library roofing contract this year, so I got three bids. And my recommendation would be to award the contract to Langer Roofing for a few different reasons. Uh, first and foremost, they are our current roofing specialist, I guess you could call them. Whenever we have roofing issues, that's who we call, they respond very quickly, uh, we can vouch for the quality of their work. They are also a well-known roofing name in the library world, a few other libraries have had them replace their roofs recently. Um, on top of that, um, when they came to do, the, the bid in your packet is from twenty twenty-three, uh, but he also came back out here and walked the roof with me again, cause he submitted that originally way back, I believe in either twenty seventeen or twenty nineteen when Laura Guest was still the director. So he's been updating it ever since then with increased impre- prices for inflation. And he walked the roof with me, he showed me what would need to be done. He also walked it with our HVAC subcontractor, because the HVAC units would have to be lifted off the roof, which would require additional crane work. So basically, he did his due diligence and I appreciated it as a library director actually knowing what's going on. As you can imagine, I don't know anything about roofing, so for him to explain everything and actually walk me through it was appreciated. Um, for example, one of the other bidders didn't even walk the roof at all, they did all of the estimate based on drone work. So obviously I feel a bit more comfortable going with the company that actually takes the time to work with me, show me what they're doing and I can vouch for their quality. They also have an A-plus rating in the Better Business Bureau. Uh, the roof will come with a five-year warranty, which is either three years longer than another bid or about the same as the other one. And the type of material that Langer is suggesting we use is noted for its dur- durability compared to TPO roofing, which is what another bidder also, um, recommended for us to use. Any questions?
I have one, um, that Aloys roofing and sheet metal, it was only half the price, sorry, they're only gonna put in half the roof?
So before Dave retired, Dave, uh, Tom and Leo and I also kind of blinked at that a little bit. The more we dug into the actual proposal, the more we discovered they were not including things that other, like Langer was including, for example. They weren't including the pavers on the roof, they were using cheaper materials possibly. Um, they didn't talk about the HVAC units and craning it off at all. Um, just little things that weren't mentioned and then you started to kind of, kind of poke at it a little bit and we started getting more costs included on that, so the actual cost would be much higher than that.
That was my guess.
Yes, and on top of that, it was never confirmed, but I'm guessing labor would just be much less as well. And the big thing with that bidder is it's only a two-year warranty, so if something goes wrong in two and a half years, we're, we're out of luck essentially.
Well, I mean, it's, it sticks out like a sore thumb, so it's like, okay, what, what's going on?
Yep.
Yes?
I have a question. I noticed that, um, on, uh, number six, it says, please note that unfortunately the rooftop units, um, we're gonna have to handle getting those off and the crane and everything.
Yep.
And I noticed on one of the other quotes that to do that, it was around eight thousand dollars?
Yes, Langer also quoted me in, uh, like a follow-up email, anywhere from four to eight thousand. So it's still, let's say it's at the high end, so that's eight thousand, the max cost we're looking at is around a hundred and six, which is still six thousand dollars less than the bid that explicitly laid that out.
Include that if we approve a certain amount, I think we have to make an allowance for that, cause that's gotta come off.
Okay.
To get that, okay.
Yep.
Review and consideration.
We're hoping to get it approved for a September installation, October at the latest.
If you have concerns with that eight thousand, I would just recommend, you know, an amount of like a hundred and ten thousand or less through that contract, cause there could be obviously additional costs.
Other incidentals?
Yeah.
I'm just, uh, if, if a motion is made, which I hope one is, but if a motion is made, then it would be very nice and requested by the clerk that the wording on the motion is included that staff has to approve because we are not looking at it in contract form. Therefore, staff could send it back and say, nope, we're sending it back to the board that gives us control. But that, it's just being requested that it would be that contingent upon staff approval and the village manager signing off on it.
I'll make a motion to approve the library roofing contract to Langer Roofing and Sheet Metal, not to exceed a hundred and ten thousand. Um, uh, with final staff review and approval once they look at the contract.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the redoing the library roof with Langer Roofing with the stipulation that staff must approve the final contract. And Ryan, the village manager, must sign up after that review and that the not to exceed amount is one hundred and ten thousand dollars for that roof work and all work that will be done in correlation with this contract. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried, the library will be not leaking anymore, it's gonna be wonderful.
Yeah, that'd be awesome.
Books are a good thing to keep dry.
Makes Leo's job easier too, he doesn't have to come over as often, so, you know.
Uh, we now have, uh, presentation of the library strategic plan, speaking of library.
Yes, I'll keep it, uh, short and brief as possible. Uh, the last strategic plan was twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-three this year, well, or this cycle, I guess you could say, we shortened it to three years, that's just because we wanted to be more responsive to all the changing trends and activities going on in library world and we all know libraries have been in the news, so we want to make sure we're always on the ball with all that kind of stuff. So just a kind of brief introduction, last summer and fall, uh, staff and myself gathered data with a community-wide survey to better understand how the library was currently being used and how we could, uh, improve or add services in the future. Once the survey ended, both myself and the library board of trustees analyzed the data at a few different board meetings and we identified several key points and concepts that would help guide the library. that would help guide the library moving forward. After these key concepts and points were identified, both myself and the Board of Trustees once again held a half-day meeting. I think it was the second Friday of March where we compiled three main objectives and goals for, three main goals in the objectives. These objectives and goals were created in direct response to the data from the survey, and I also had a bunch of one-on-one meetings with every single staff member to not only get their buy-in to what our vision is going to be in the future, but if they had any concerns or ideas or anything like that, they could let me know directly as well. And once that was completed, the strategic plan was formally approved by the Library Board of Trustees last month in April twenty twenty-four. So looking at the big picture, the board and myself identified three strategic directions that we want to focus on over the next few years. The first one is community. Basically, we want to contribute to our community's vibrancy, and we want to ensure ongoing engagement by making sure we bolster the, not only the visibility, but also the utilization of library services. The biggest goal in that is evaluating current services and forming sustainable partnerships for additional outreach opportunities. Right now, we are the only library in the entire twenty-four-member Bridges Library System that has an ongoing monthly visit from schoolchildren. We're partnering with Heartland North right now, and we're going to try to expand that to other schools, whether that be Heartland South or North Shore, Swallow, St. Charles. Brianna Rasmussen, our new circulation supervisor, used to be a librarian at St. Charles. So we're hoping we can improve that connection. But basically, we just want to form more community ties, whether that's school visits or expanding to retirement communities or other organizations like Kiwanis and the Rotary Club and Optimists. We just want to kind of expand our reach everywhere we can. And in order to do that, we need to develop a marketing and messaging strategy. The librarian in the picture is Emily Doty. She is our engagement and teen librarian, and she'll be in charge of our marketing moving forward. She is wonderful. Next, we want to focus on the facility specifically. We want to enhance our facilities to elevate the patron experience and provide superior access to resources. The two biggest goals in this, first and foremost, we want to acquire and maintain relevant technologies. Libraries aren't just places where you can check out books anymore. You need to offer services to the community. One of those services is offering a community space. People need to be able to come in and use the library. They can gather there. They can use it for work. They can use it for play, anything like that. A big way to draw people into the library is making sure we offer the most current technology available. For example, we did just get a twenty-five-hundred-dollar grant from Bridges. We're going to be installing a new iMac computer. It's basically an Apple desktop by our public PCs, and we're going to be getting a bunch of Adobe programs like Photoshop. We have a lot of requests from the community for that, and right now, we don't have that. And actually, a lot of the other libraries don't have that, so we're hoping that kind of gives us an edge over some of the other local libraries. And then on top of that, we want to develop a plan to add or repurpose creative spaces. We don't have study rooms at the library right now, so we're hoping to add those in addition to the program rooms that we have. And our children's area is original to the building, going back to like ninety-two or ninety-three. So we're hoping to kind of refresh that over the next few years. And obviously, a large part of that is going to be fundraising. So we need to harness all the community organizations and partnerships that we can to help raise funds for that in the future. And finally, staff. You can't have a good business or library without having good experienced staff. We need to promote exceptional customer service and doing that through staff development and supporting them. We need to provide professional development opportunities for staff, such as sending them to conferences, such as the Wisconsin Library Association, so they can talk to other libraries from across the state and bring those ideas back to us. And we need to get a volunteer program going. Right now, there are a lot of tasks that might not require specialized knowledge that the librarians have that they still have to do day in and day out, like making craft bags. And if we can get volunteers to come in, whether that be high school students or retired individuals or anyone in between, we can kind of offload that work from staff so they can focus on more specialized tasks, such as cataloging, creating new collections, and creating programs for the community. So those are our three major focuses for at least the next three years. Are there any questions? I flew through that.
I think it sounds awesome, to be quite honest with you. I think it's a good way to be focused and a good area to go at. It's some good goals.
Yeah, well, I know a lot of libraries.
And I like to hear about the fundraising, but I think those are great areas to go after.
Yeah, we have a lot of opportunity at the library the next few years, so it's pretty exciting. And I know Sussex, Puywaki, Oconomak, their strategic plans are anywhere from like ten to fifteen pages. The board and myself wanted to make this as concise as possible, and it gives us a clear path forward.
Thank you. All right, now we have a presentation of a development concept for Eagle Pass. Sorry. We have review and consideration of an intergovernmental agreement for law enforcement services for the twenty twenty-four Republican National Convention. Chief?
All right, we got this thing going here. So this is the intergovernmental agreement or the IGA that we would enter into at the city of Milwaukee, and this would allow for reimbursement for any officer's time spent during the RNC event coming up this July. We do have our SCIT, our Suburban Critical Incident Team, going to be providing some support throughout that event. And we're going to have some of the members of the Heartland Police Department as part of that SCIT team providing that support. So we want to see those reimbursables brought back for their time spent. We had some issues getting through the original IGA because of section eleven point two. There talks about assisting personnel, remaining employees of the contractor. We would be the contractor. The initial IGA had a language in there that would basically said we'd have to waive our right for the reimbursement under the mutual aid statute. And I wasn't willing to take on that risk and said that we wouldn't be willing to waive the right. We want to fall under that mutual aid statute and follow the state statute and not just waive it. So we had a little back and forth. I rewrote some of that IGA to fall in line with what our expectations would be so we don't take on all that risk as the Village of Heartland to provide that support in another community. Milwaukee did review it for a couple of weeks, and their city attorney's office got back to us saying it was approved and that we can move forward with the language as you see it written here today under eleven point two with us not waiving the right and that we do, that we may submit for the reimbursement as outlined in Wisconsin State Statute sixty-six point oh five one three. So that's pretty standard language in all our multi-jurisdictional or cooperative agreements. That statute's there for a reason, and obviously, that is a high-risk event. I wasn't willing to take on the liability without able to follow that state statute. So we look like we're in a good place. The only thing I wanted to mention is it looks like they may need some DocuSign feedback back and forth. I know we typically print these out. The village president would sign this. If it is a DocuSign-type thing is the only way that they would accept this correspondence, I would ask the board to grant me authorization to sign on the village president's behalf just so we could get this taken care of because we're about a month and a half behind due to their review of their agreement. And as you all know, this is coming up in July, and we're hoping to get all the paperwork and everything solidified well in advance of this event taking place and make sure we have what we need in place.
I'll make a motion then that we approve the intergovernmental agreement for law enforcement services for the twenty twenty-four Republican National Convention, also giving Chief Misko the authority to sign on President Flanders' behalf.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the intergovernmental agreement for law enforcement services for the twenty twenty-four Republican National Convention and to allow Chief Misko to sign on behalf of the village president for the DocuSign to approve this or to sign this agreement. Any discussion?
Yeah, I not about that, but I do have a question. So any any non-Milwaukee police officer cannot arrest somebody? Is that what I read in here? You have to, or you're going to be paired up with a Milwaukee cop?
Yeah, no, so you can because it is mutual aid. We will have arrest powers within their jurisdiction. What they're asking for is that you're going to be paired up, and most most often, you'll be either if you're like on traffic detail, you could be paired up directly one-on-one. If you're in a unit, which will be more in a unit environment with the Suburban Critical Incident Team, we'd have an MPD liaison with us. They want the MPD officer as much as possible being the one to process because they know the Milwaukee County system. So this event is, has support coming from agencies from across the country are coming to Milwaukee to offer support for this event. It's a very large police event. We don't have the resources, and it's hard in the sense that everyone even surrounding them, we don't want to be sending all our resources because we could have things that we need to be dealing with. So we got to work that balance. So they have multiple agencies from out of state that definitely know, will know their procedures. But even the difference between Waukesha County and Milwaukee County, there's a lot of different procedurally, things are done procedurally different between intake at the jail and all these other processes that exist with their district attorney's office and so on and so forth. So they're just trying to keep it simple and say, under most, if not all circumstances, we want this going through a Milwaukee police officer that knows the system. But they could, they could and will have arrest authority depending on the nature of the event and whatever else. So they would be able to detain. It's just they're looking to process through the Milwaukee Police Department.
Okay, I was curious.
Anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Now we have present, presentation of development concept, the Eagle Pass, formerly known as the Hammer Property. And then after this, the appropriate thing would be a consideration of moving the concept review to Plan Commission or not moving it to Plan Commission, but this is just a concept review.
Oh, yeah, you only had six lots in this one.
Thank you. Sure, we got one on electronics. Oh, you got it? It is. It's got that seventh lot right here. Look. Here. Right here.
Oh, there. Okay.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ken Servie, and just FYI, I am a longtime resident of this community, belong to St. Charles, member of the Knights of Columbus, past president for after twenty years of the Condomentum Association. And the library does a great job. We've had our last several annual meetings there, and it's a great place. So we are proposing seven lots in this property, which is pretty much, we're connecting the two existing roads, Eagle Pass and I don't know the name of the other one. And we're just proposing seven lots, connect the two streets that are there. Very, very simple, meet the zoning requirements, everything else. So I guess it's very simple. It's just a matter of if something this we could get through Plan Commission and et cetera. In the in the letter I did write to the village manager and et cetera, the zoning is the same. We're keeping everything the same. So there'll be, there would be, you can't sugarcoat this any way, shape, or form because it's landlocked all the way around. You will have trucks going in and out, and you will have some very bluntly pissed-off residences, you know, that I can't do anything about that. There is no access in and out anyplace, but except for the streets that are there. So we're just asking to move.
I think that one of the biggest things with that during construction, I think one of the biggest things with construction would be trying to be cognizant of the, you know, of the people that are living there, you know, like.
I, yes, sir.
To the best, and keeping it as clean as possible.
I've been a contractor my whole life, had several, seven parade homes, probably built fifty subdivisions. I'm real well aware of neighbors' complaints and how how it's, there's no sugarcoating it, there they're going to be complaints.
No, I I think what I'm saying is, I'm just saying, being as cognizant as possible to try to make it.
We can, and I try to tell, I'm retired, so the contractor hire, I can just, you always get some clown. It just just happens, but I can, I could tell them, preach them, have meetings with them, do everything. You know, I assume the starting date, hour rather in the morning, is a seven AM start, nothing before that, et cetera.
Hmm, that's correct.
And I guess that's very, basically very simple.
Can you, you have the contract for that land or own it?
I'm no, I'm, I've left the hire seven. I'm retired.
No, 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 but you currently have the land under contract?
Yes, oh, yes, yes.
In that other portion of the additional seven?
Yes, we're working on that, yes, sir.
Okay.
So are you talking about lot two?
Uh, yeah.
The new map?
Yeah.
Okay, so he owns that? Or he, that's the one he's looking at?
No, I don't own it.
But you're working on it?
We have an offer, accepted offer to purchase, yes.
Well, I know some of the the people in the audience are looking at the map on the, and that's the old map, so.
That's, it's actually the same, it's just we're going to add one lot.
The. There's some, oh, I'm sorry. There's some people that are in attendance that are from the.
Would the lots and homes be similar in nature?
I'm sorry.
Would the lots be similar in size to the current ones?
Yes.
And the homes similar in nature?
Yeah, I I design houses.
Only, it's only, we can hear you about the recording needs to pick it up.
My name's Tom Langen. I sold lots in Hart Ridge when they were seventeen thousand nine hundred dollars. Now you can't get a driveway for that. And I live in the Economak area, except my my wife owns the physical therapy clinic in the Sendix Shopping Center next to the diner. So we're local. But unfortunately, a starter home today is seven hundred thousand dollars. So I would imagine with a lot prices, we're going to see homes at a start range in there of about nine hundred thousand dollars. So.
So one of the things we're touching on, I want to give a history, and some of the people that are residents of the current subdivision, and I'm just giving you a brief background, and I haven't had a chance to talk at length with them, but that'll go on more at Plan Commission if this makes it there, which I presume it will. So what you're doing is kind of, I think I'm right. It's basically what they originally had intended to some extent, I think. I don't know exactly, but there was going to be homes back here. So going off of the village manager's question, I think that there'd be, and there's an, I can't speak for the whole board. For myself, there'd be an expectation that those homes would be at the quality of what's there now in the subdivision now or above.
Yes, yes, I I think, like I say, the the start rate, I'm anticipating a start range of about nine hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, and the only other suggestion I would have is in trying to, since there's that outlot there, in trying to at least keep, even if it, I'm not the engineer, so I don't know, but even if it's a, if it's long and narrow, but keeping that retention pond closer to the road as opposed to right on the property line of the other property owners, just for in times of rain, mosquitoes and stuff like that, it keeps a buffer there. I know there's some trees, but that way, there's still a buffer. It keeps their privacy going good.
You're kidding.
Could you use the microphone just because we need it for the recording?
I'm loud enough usually. We would try to save as much land and dirt as we could, so we would save money trucking in and out. I would propose burming along sixteen, obviously, and all the way around, just to put berms in there for noise control and everything else, and also losing dirt and like people could burm it and put trees on it, plantings on it, et cetera.
Are you suggesting, oh, even to prevent a buffer for the current homeowners that are there? Okay.
You know, so basically, but we have to get past the night to get into design to come back and everything else.
I understand. Since they're here, I'm just, and there's not many of them. Does anybody, this is only an asking, if anybody wants to step forward, this is only an asking, is there any reason that we kill this now and don't even send it to Plan Commission? And if you do want to speak, please step to the microphone, but since there's people here from the subdivision, if you did want to say something, you can, but if it, this is only if you're like, no, kill this now for this reason and not send it to the Plan Commission, because this is only conceptual.
If it's no, I'll push him out the door.
No, we have two, we have two members of the.
Sure, it's Gary, it's because they got to pick it up.
Name is Gary Stromback, three zero five Bagdoo Drive. I'm on the Homeowners Association for Late Country Metals, and I also share a border with this property. I don't see any reason to kill that. We don't have to go into, so we're saying we don't have to go into detail right now.
Correct, that would all be at Plan Commission.
Ah, I see nothing here. Does this, one quick question, is a landlock any in other properties on the western?
We talked about that. They all own through so to some of those back parcels, because that was some of the confusion to make sure nobody was landlocked. There might be parcels that have two on one, that they do have a way to get through their own property. That's always been the difficult part of this.
Okay, I have nothing else at this time. Thank you.
Does does anyone know why it was never completed to begin with?
I've just been told the person who owned that land didn't have the desire to complete it at that time, and it's just.
Wait, what was the question?
Why this land didn't get developed with the rest of the subdivision.
Because the, they call it the Hammer Property because Mrs. Hammer owned it and said, nope, it's never going to be built on ever while she was living. Then, and we do have someone here that knows it, but Mrs. Then, and we do have someone here that knows it, but Mrs. Hammer owned this property. When she passed away, then her children got it and said, I agree with her, this is never gonna be built on. And then a few years passed by and then a couple more years passed by and they said, well, maybe we're gonna build. And then they said, okay, we're gonna build, and then they said, oh wow, we're gonna, we're now we're for sure gonna do something. That's actually, that's how it happened.
I mean, this plan completes it.
Right.
Yeah, this, this would may have to meet all the stormwater, all the, the road improvements, are currently our plows, plow up to there, reverse back out, uh, so this would make a, a pass all the way through, water sewer would be looped.
And, and, and that's why I try to include and say that I do think that it has to somehow, I'm just trying to be right up front in saying it has to be at the quality and type and similar square footage homes or better than what's there. Um, because even though it will be technically a separate subdivision, because it's hard to tie them now, at least it will appear one in the same, except for you'll just drive past a new subdivision sign on those two places.
So if you. If you approve this for the plant to move to the plan commission, that would be next Monday, the twentieth. Now again, these are.
We may not be able.
That's fine.
We didn't do it, we may not be able to.
That's fine.
So you gotta remember, it's just conceptual. The plank, so the way we're set up is the village board reviews it conceptually, then the plan commission reviews it conceptually. And if both parties say, yeah, this is kind of idea of what we're looking for, at that point, that's when you come forward to the next time you're ready at the plan commission, whether that's July, August, September, however far.
Well, I'd like to do it, get it done this late summer, early fall, so we get paved this area.
But all of the neighbors, we, so we have a, a radius that we mail to for this project, we now, we will pick up every home in the subdivision. It's hard because you gotta remember when there's a radius, some neighbors can say, well, I didn't get it. We're gonna include everybody on Merton, everybody on, on all of the roads so that everybody is aware of it, so.
I don't think you have to go north of sixteen.
I, I just, I don't want somebody in that subdivision to say, hey, I wasn't aware of that. You're gonna need a motion.
I'd make a motion that we move the concept review to the plan commission.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to uh, move this item uh, for the Hammer property uh, at Eagle Pass and Badger Drive to uh, plan commission. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried.
And you did.
Thank you very much.
You're, you did pick a good roofing contractor, Langer.
They're outstanding. I am asking for a recess.
It will go to next Monday for the plan commission, it'll be just like.
Smoke if you go?
Everybody's had a month or more to think about it. So let's talk. occasion of that. Um, and at the same time, we have the uh, you know, the village to think about and trying to make sure to utilize their money properly. We could, I mean, the floor is open to talk about whatever we need to talk about, about how we do this, how we uh, engage the public, how we educate the public and let them know the needs so that they can be safe and their lives can be saved when they need it. Or so that they can be helped if they have a broken leg or fall off a ladder or all kinds of different things. I really don't, my opinion. I, I, I just, I, I don't. In the world we're living in right now and what I see going on across Lake Country, I don't know another way around this than, than just attacking this thing, but doing it strategically. That, I, I don't mean anything bad, I, I commend everybody that works on Western Lakes and Lake Country Fire and all of that. I would like to see, personally, I'd like to see um, Heartland Fire stay with Heartland. And uh, even if that means that other communities want to um, come to us and they want us to provide service, I think that that's where things may go as opposed to the corporate way. Because then people still have control and if they don't like who they're contracting with, they can leave and go to a different uh, you know, corporate department. Recently, just Lisbon and Pewaki did that. I think our community wants that, which is more important, is for us to just be the Heartland, Heartland Fire Department. I do think Heartland's only gonna grow, I know, I'm not saying I'm pushing for this, even though I mean it's uh, I, I don't know what's gonna happen with this tax law, but I can tell you right now that either development is gonna keep going up, but I can tell you that fire service isn't gonna get any cheaper. So if we don't build up, the taxes will go up because it's gonna cost more, and it's not just fire, but it's gonna cost more for other services, so the taxes are just gonna go up, up, up. I just don't, I really don't think thirty years from now, Heartland's gonna have ten thousand people in it. I really don't. I think you're gonna have a significant amount more than that, I think you're gonna have fifteen or, or twenty thousand people in it. And I think you'll see four, five and six story buildings, I really do. But I just did that, I went first just so that I could open it up, uh, because sometimes people hesitate to speak, but I think that the way I look at it is we have to figure out how to, how to go, I think the full-time department is the way to go based on all the way back to when we went and met at the firehouse and there's just not people that step up from the community. Uh, that, that's not a bad thing, I mean, there's a big difference compared to years ago. Years ago, you could go and sign up for the fire department. And if I'm not mistaken, I mean, you wanna go back to the seventies and it was like, basically the chief could have you do anything they send you to do, it just wasn't the same world. You know, if you, but it's, it is a different world now, you gotta have certain certifications to do anything, including even running pumps on a truck. And it's just different, so. I don't see, I don't see a way around this other than we ditch having a Heartland Fire Department or we gotta make a move. I, I just, I, I've racked my brain, I just don't see, the, the only other option I see is spending three hundred grand to try to do an advertising campaign, a massive marketing campaign to try to get people within the village to uh, sign up and, but you're talking three years before they're completely online, so we're still stuck, so. I, I was just throwing it out, like, we could try that, but even then, I mean, a lot of people's jobs don't allow, they'll start and then they won't be living here and I know I'm kinda rambling, but I just don't see a choice for us, I think we need to keep Heartland Fire going. We might change on how many people we think need to be on a shift, uh, based on some of the options in the strategic plan. But. Do sense.
One question that I have is uh, the challenge of the facilities, uh, is Keller going to be looking at that as well?
Yeah, so we talked about that with Keller, it's chicken and the egg. Fire is going to be part of that study. If we don't do, i- if the, if the board votes not to add more people, not to go to a referendum, whatever it would take, the firehouse still has upgrades that need to be made, you heard about the uh, the fire gear that has off the same HVAC, there's, there's upgrades that are needed. If um, if it goes to a referendum, and that, that's kinda one of the first things I wrote, was housing, not enough room. So no matter how many bodies you get, I know Chief said they can, there he is, I'm sorry.
There's two other ones over there.
Yeah. There, there would need to be, they could do temporary upgrades to house people, but they will need long-term housing. So yes, they would be a part of it. If you get a ref, if you go for referendum and you get the bodies, however many bodies you determine, and then we go to referendum for a building and it fails, that's gonna be interesting. If we go out for a building and don't get the bodies, that will also be interesting, this is a very weird thought process of what will happen, and again, we could take them all together. But not gonna lie, when we met with Keller, that, he said it's probably a year to two year, we're not gonna be building this August or next August, it's going to take a while. And that's referendum and same with, and, and that's where, just, I mean, there's safer grants, as you're aware, where we can get fire personnel. The bad part about safer grants is if you don't have that funding source in the three years when that's up, you're firing however many people you give safer grants to.
And giving the money back.
Yeah, and giving the money back. Real quick math, uh, it, it's a number that's out there, it's say about a hundred thousand dollars. So we would have a hundred thousand dollars per firefighter, that's with benefits, training, everything associated with that. You know, you might have a salary of sixty-five, you're gonna have, if they're on a family plan, it's twenty thousand dollar benefit, you're gonna have Wisconsin retirement that the village is paying fourteen point eight two two. So quick math, I'm just throwing out a hundred thousand. So if you did a referendum at a hundred thousand, that would cost about a nickel per body. So if they, if we went with the eighteen, I, I'm just throwing numbers, there was eighteen out there, I can do, I can do the math on others. But if, if you did the full eighteen, a three hundred seventy thousand dollar house would have an annual increase of three hundred fifty dollars per year. And then I would stick with it. The tricky part about that is everybody's gonna get a raise, so if you have eighteen people, just like us right now, we're getting tight. Eventually, we would need more operating costs in a referendum too, because those employees will wanna give raises. But whatever number you guys come up with or, you know, I know, I'm sure Chief can tell you scenarios and I'm sure Bruce might be able to as well, on, on what would work for a crew and, and what wouldn't, but I'm just here if you need numbers, I, there's no way to do this without referendum. That's the only way to get that money.
Can we do a referendum for personnel, correct, we can?
Yeah.
How many years out do we go?
How many what?
When we do a referendum, what, what's that process? Like if you, if you go for a referendum because you want a new fire department, that's a referendum just for that department, but then that referendum's dead.
Yeah, so.
You still paid, but.
You would put out there that you would have an operational piece to it, like Western Lakes was trying to get where they were getting thirty-eight officers and built in overtime. Or is that what they wanted, thirty-eight, is that what they were shooting for?
Yeah.
So you would come up with kinda the referendum wording and Sandy and I obviously have never done a referendum, so we would look into what we can and can't do. A lot of things with that is you can't have certain questions to the people, you kinda, you can't say, hey, we're gonna do three this year and then in five years, we're gonna do five more. You, you take a referendum and that's what a lot of people are, I mean, Arrowhead's going off for referendum. It's the only way anybody can get anything done, so. You know, it, you guys would have to determine, because if you, if you go out and get five people next year and, and the community votes yes, and then we want five more in five years, there's no way. Well, my opinion.
Right. This isn't because Arrowhead's doing it, but the, these are the things that we have to figure out, do we go out? I mean, this is like, I don't know how to say it, it's, it's kinda like just getting in, jumping in, but do we send out a survey? Because remember, we got PD going on too, this is just for fire, but we have a whole, you know, they have their whole other issues where they have people, but they have, I mean, they're all like sergeants inside of a, you know, that department. I don't, I wanna hear from other people on the board, because basically that's really the question that we have right now, are we gonna go to a referendum? And are we gonna do this, or are we gonna sit and try to find different avenues to do it, along with, we still have all the other things going on in the village?
So in my opinion, I think we do need to consider full-time people, no question. The question is, when you look at what the growth potential is in Heartland in the next five and ten years, how big can we really get? And, and what, what does that mean for the count that we would need long-term, let's say for ten years? Is five full-time firefighters enough for ten years? Is, you know, and, and the number you brought up earlier, Ryan, of, I think you said about three hundred fifty dollar taxing increase for, I think you said a three hundred and five thousand dollar home, right?
Yes.
That was based on how many bodies?
Eighteen, so the reason I got to the eighteen firefighters, that's kinda what we talked about previously is the desire for a full-time at some aspect could be two on an AMBO, four on a truck, that can be pared down. But then you, you have three shifts, plus you need people to cover vacations. We have five full-timers right now that are running, so eighteen would, but again, you guys can, that's what you guys will have to figure out, what number would look good and.
And even at that rate, we could look at, you know, possibly making some of those hires just firefighter EMTs. If we start putting two medics on a rig, we can pare down to firefighter EMTs, which would be a, a cheaper version of, of doing that then.
So the firefighter EMT would be on the rig, not on the AMBO, right?
No, they would be bo, on both, but the paramedics, if, if we go to a two-paramedic system, they can do a lot more stuff in the field. Right now, we only have a one-paramedic system, so they're not allowed to do, you know.
Oh, because the second AMBO has to have a paramedic on it, so they're gotcha.
Yes. So if we do something like that, I mean, we could pare that down too, to a point where we could hire, you know, just firefighter EMTs, which would be at a cheaper rate than a firefighter paramedic type thing, so.
Can, can the department function, and Bruce, feel free to chime in on this, can the department function if it had eighteen?
That'd be three full-time shifts, so you'd work twenty-four.
That's three full-time shifts, but there's gonna be somebody on vacation. And I understand that, can the department function at that full-time level, what happens if someone calls in sick at the last minute?
So.
Like they really are, they're really sick.
Departments in the area had part-time personnel like we do now, and they tried to get rid of them and found out they couldn't survive on that just because of that. And found out they couldn't survive on that just because of that fact. If you have vacations, if you have time off, they need somebody to be able to fill in. So as far as keeping part-time members around, probably is a, a good idea to do that, because then you have somebody that can backfill those positions when they're out on vacation or out on holiday.
That's the hybrid that I'm kind of looking for. Cause we still have people that are wanting to be involved.
Absolutely, right.
And obviously it's something to talk about, but you know, where it'd be just as backfill. If that's a full crew all day. You know what I mean? But if all of a sudden, you know, you have someone on maternity leave or.
Right.
Or even a, a guy's out on maternity leave, you know, their, their wife is, is pregnant, so they're gonna spend some time at home with baby and.
Sure.
And their wife and, and that kinda thing, you know? Uh, or they, you know, they get hurt on the job.
Yeah, exactly.
Those are all things, but, cause if we have fill-in, then we don't have to worry about the necessar, you know, they used to say like one point three, you need one point three people for each position, cause then you can cover for all the. But if we had that backup. Now we're able to.
Yeah, I mean.
How many full-time do you have now? Five?
Five, correct.
So this would be an addition of.
Thirteen.
Thirteen people?
That's where you guys had to figure out what you wanna get. That would be a, that's, my number's two, I think. Cause I was adding eighteen people, cause we were.
Oh, gotcha.
When, when Bruce presented, there was a thought of eighteen possibly bodies to.
Total, total of eighteen, six per shift, six full-timers per shift, so.
Right.
Thirteen more.
So my, just a question, Ryan. What we're doing tonight is discussing the strategic plan for the fire department just for personnel, correct?
Yep.
Okay.
We're moving forward with the building study and they're gonna be like option A or.
So that would be two different referendums?
That's up to us.
So would we possibly move ahead with the personnel referendum before the building referendum? Well, I know, that's what I'm, I'm confused.
We could, because we can make a, I can tell you right now, if we need to provide sleeping quarters for them, for a million dollars or one point five million dollars, we can approve to borrow the money. Chief, would you at least agree with that? I'm not saying it's a perfect scenario. We could add on to the building for one million dollars and have sleeping quarters for.
Absolutely, put temporary trailers in or whatever we have to do.
Or whatever we have to do, or, or even.
We could, we could move, you know, we could move some stuff around to add some bunk space, temporary bunk space.
We don't have to go to referendum to build because we do have the option of borrowing.
Yeah, oh, yeah. I just wanted to confirm, cause I.
Sure.
Was confused about that one. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I, again, though, you'd have operational aspect to this, because with bigger facilities, you, you, we're gonna have higher. This isn't just bodies, no matter what we do, even with police, fire, the more space we have, theoretically, we might have cheaper electric, depending on how, you know. This building, everything, just air just goes. We heat outside.
Energy for.
Yeah, but you're gonna have more, more with that, um, when, so again, this is just say, hey, what do we wanna do? And if you guys wanna go for eighteen people. Quick math on it, at a hundred thousand across the board would be a two hundred fifty-three dollar increase for three hundred seventy thousand dollar house to be at a eighteen ferment firefighter paramedic. So that would be adding thirteen bodies.
I personally think that we should go for the eighteen at, to me, this is just my opinion, cause I, and I won't, well, I always say that. I'm not even gonna apologize, cause I can talk if I want to. I think we should go for eighteen minimum total, full-timers. Because we're basically switching what we're doing right now. Right now, we have just sprinkled in full-timers and a ton of, you know, I, I, I call it volunteer, but paid-on-call. People coming in, people showing up right at the scene, cause they have their gear already. We're flipping that, where the backup plan is, I'm calling it volunteer, the backup plan is volunteer, but we have core boom. You know, our core, uh. Call responders is not any longer volunteers coming in. Our core, you know, we're not gonna have someone at the station just wishing, yeah, our first out is now a full-time department.
Right. I, I think the, the explanation is, I, I've, I put my toe in the water a little bit in the last couple of weeks, talking to different people, walking by the house and things and just. They, they stop and talk to me about the same kinda stuff, and I'm like, well, there's gonna be a conversation coming and, and we're gonna be having to talk about fire. And almost everyone had the same kinda reaction, well, we can't not have a fire department.
Right.
You know, and I, you explain it away as no one's volunteering.
Right.
This, the whole model's changed, the education, like you mentioned, has changed significantly since the, the older methods, the nineteen seventies, nineteen eighties. When they'd get back from a fire call and have a couple of beers in the station.
Right.
Those days are gone.
A couple.
But I think if we, if we educate people, they're the right way, and maybe we do Q and A sessions, maybe we do it at the park, maybe we open houses. We educate people properly on it. It, it needs to happen, I agree. And I think that the total number, I'm with you on that too, the total number should be that eighteen. We've got five, we get thirteen more, and I think that's the ask.
And food works, Chief, so a lot of pancake breakfast is summer, we'll be able to get the word out.
So I was, something I was gonna bring up in my update, I have seven people in the process at City of Peewaiki right now. If I lose those, seven, seven, those seven people, the majority of them work part-time shifts during the day. You know, if they all get hired, and Peewaiki's hiring ten.
Right.
So.
Yep.
Yeah, that, that would put a severe hurt on me.
Yep.
So.
I would say I agree with Adam, uh, you know, that the, uh, education is the key. I think also it'd be good to have some other departments that maybe played the opposite gambling thing and it didn't work out, and, you know, what the negative impact would be if we didn't do it. And for those that are kinda upset and say, hey, you can volunteer if you don't like the referendum, or you don't wanna pay. You got options, right?
And the truth is, the people that have gone to, and so like right now, Peewaiki's hiring, because Peewaiki just got a huge contract where other municipalities are coming to pay.
Right.
Um, but there's, you know, you got Lake Country Fire, again, I'm not taking, I commend them for their service, but you also have Western Lakes. But I think when you're in control of that money a hundred percent. You can control how it's spent. And that's actually cheaper than having to pay, for instance, in Della Field, they're paying a four hundred and fifty dollar fire fee. We're talking for a three hundred and seven thousand dollar house, it's only went up three hundred fifty. Two fifty-three. They're paying four fifty. So I mean, look what we're getting, when we really look at the value. I mean, we're, it, it, this isn't, it's just a. It's not the first time Heartland went through this. Highway sixteen used to go through the middle of Heartland, they wanted to move it, and everybody went nuts, but then now look at us go. It's just something that we gotta do, though. Or that's, I agree with you, Rick. And I think education is key, like going out to the businesses, where we're gonna have to pay for printings, so I did at the businesses, the bars, the restaurants, and say, hey, if anybody has, you know.
And, and I guess we also need to educate ourselves and be educated more comfortably on the other stories, the Western Lakes story. What, how did that start? Where is it now?
Yeah.
What are the response times like?
Do we wanna have that negative?
That's your alternative, right?
It started, cause they were gonna save money. They was gonna save a ton of money.
Yeah, how's that working out right now?
Uh, that's my point, though, because you're not in complete control, so then it's a race to the bottom, but at some point you gotta pay. Price-wise, it's a race to the bottom, but it's somebody, Chief, you know. Bruce, do you have anything you wanna add?
Uh, no, I think you're having a very good conversation, and I think you have a good grasp on what the future could hold, um, you know, depending on which. Which direction you wanna go. So I, no, I, I think you're, you sound great.
I think some of that staff level, I think you guys will have to talk about. The education part. We all know what's going on with the grand picture, so I would really hope that, like, police and fire. Would be in on talks, cause we don't wanna pass up on opportunities to educate people about everything, cause we have that going on as well. I just think, I think it is good to. To educate people and kinda think up, I don't know, but we just gotta educate the people. You know, I mean, the people here in this community do love police and they love fire. Yeah, you get some people that, I mean. You know, be like, oh, you could save more money and this and that, but I mean, we have outstanding people that are working on the fire department, people volunteering at the fire department, people put, even putting in their own time, coming in the middle of the night. We have the same thing on, you know, on police, people risking their lives. I mean, how many, it was only a few years ago that we had an officer get shot. Yeah, I mean, people are putting their lives on the line. This community really backs that a lot, and I think that with the right conversation and giving the right information, I think that. I, I actually think this community will stand behind it. I think Rick and Adam are right. You know, all, it's all about the education and getting that information out, and I think before the end of it, they'll be like, yeah, let's do that. We don't wanna do what other departments did, you know?
So I guess I think my, not that we're voting, doing anything today, my recommendation would be that we work along with Keller. With the building study, cause again, if, if we get the bodies but no.
Housing.
Housing, and if we get housing and no bodies, I think these, you agree, they probably go together for the same type of referendum. But.
I think so. I would agree.
It almost has to.
I wish we didn't have to call it a referendum, we could've called it a question-seeking information. People hate referendum, but, yeah, no, I agree with you.
Sorry, I just.
No, you're.
Just trying to think.
Well, let's take a little more time and think on this. I mean, let's take two more weeks, cause we kinda know where we're going, so it gives staff time to go and start.
I'll, I'll work with Chief. Sandy, we'll look into what, you know, what options we do or don't have as, with a referendum. We could talk to other fire departments that have gone through this, succeeded, others that have failed. And just find out what the process was, cause obviously it is open houses, it is educating. Same with our buildings, when we go through the building study. You know, everyone thinks with the house here and it's fine, but again, we have a lot of things failing here. We have, uh, an administrative, again, I hate saying it, but like, we're fine. Like, I'll deal with what it is, but police. Police for what they're dealing with and, and fire, you know, I, to me, you shouldn't have your HVAC hooked in to Julie's office. I'm sure that's not the healthiest option for us. So we'll see. But Keller, Keller will be looking into sites that buildings could or would go, um, and we'll figure out options from there, so. I understand that. I, I don't, I don't think we're even ready in two weeks. I think we'll have to look.
I think you're gonna have to dig for some info and start.
And we'll, we'll come back. Cause you guys would ultimately have to determine if a referendum is what you wanna do, when we would kinda move forward with it.
And it's not just, this kinda goes all along with the whole study.
It does. Well, but that's what you guys have to decide, if you wanna do a referendum for the bodies and then try and get the building or do it all together, that'll be, you guys will have to.
There's other stuff too, I mean, there's.
I know.
The stuff we talked about, but, yeah, okay, all right.
Was there emotion or anything?
Everybody good? Chief, good?
Absolutely.
Chiefs, good?
I, it's, this is a hard one, cause you can get bodies without a house or a house without bodies, so.
Board, are, are you good to be complete for tonight on discussing this? Is anybody, is not, is anybody not for at least moving in that direction? Cause I do want anybody to have the floor that wants it.
Like we're on the same page.
As is customary, and then they say, oh, you're all mockstep, and it's like, well, we all just think alike.
Common sense.
It's only the haters that say that. Well, with that, that was a good discussion. We have announcements.
Couple of quick updates. One, um, I sent out previously, but Lake Country Lutheran High School was looking at potentially adding that school of resource officer. Position for this upcoming school year, so that would be twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, um, at a hundred percent funding. They had to divert, they have many schools within their school network, they had to divert some of those security funds to some other schools. So they weren't able to fund that for this upcoming school year, but they are very optimistic that it will happen in that twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. School, uh, school year, so that's, that's, uh, looking like it's still on track and not just a dead issue. We can definitely use it. We've been fairly busy over the last couple of weeks up in that area. And then, um. I got invited, um, to be part of our summer legislative committee on, on our mental health commitments. It's kinda timely. We actually, our State Chiefs Association just did a tour of our Winnebago Mental Health Facility. That's a state hospital that has to. Take any type of involuntary mental health, um, plan that is, has to be provided through a county. So if there's no space here, we would send, uh, people up to Winnebago, and they do that across the whole state of Wisconsin. So we had a, a tour of that facility and looking through, bringing efficiencies to the process there, because we all end up there in one shape or another. Interesting enough, for those of you that were at the Medline tour, saw some Medline mattresses and products throughout, throughout the Winnebago Mental Health Facility. But it's good to see that the legislature, cause I've been talking about this well over a decade and bringing efficiency to this process. I feel like I'm saying the same things I still said ten years ago, so that gets frustrating. But it's good to see the legislature saying, we do gotta figure this out. I know they're spending a boatload of money up at Winnebago. Um, I think there's probably more efficient ways to do it, which also can provide better care. Um, but for them to, they only pick a handful of topics to do these summer committee studies, and to do it on this topic is a good thing. It looks like they may narrow the focus to minors only, which I think we're missing the boat on, uh, by doing that, but it's better than nothing, I suppose. So hopefully, we can bring some efficiency to that process in the near future.
Thanks, Chief.
Uh, just a couple of things, um, besides what I talked about before with the seven people in the process at, at Peewaiki, we ran a hundred calls last month. So busy, a very busy month for us. Caught us up to where we're only down eleven for the year. And I think already at this time, what are we at, Julie? About forty calls?
Uh, I think it was about over forty-four.
Forty-four calls already this month, so, so been, been moving, so, um, yeah, that's about the only other thing I have.
Thank you, Chief.
Uh, T-ball kicks off next week, uh, so that's pretty exciting. Um, it's a great number of participants this year, uh, two hundred and ten. Um, so that is great. Uh, hometown celebration volunteer signup is out and available. If anybody has any questions or wants to learn, um, about that opportunity, I'd be happy to go over that. Um, hometown celebration will be June twenty-eighth through thirtieth this year. Um, and we are, the rec department is still hiring for summer camp positions.
Thank you.
Uh, the DPW, uh, the Bristol Cone Water Tower is still in the process of, uh, being painted, so hopefully in a couple of weeks, uh, they'll be ready to put back online. Arlene Lift Station in Bristol Cone, um, we have finally gonna be receiving the generator on the twentieth of May here. We've been waiting three years for that generator. So that's finally gonna get installed. May twentieth as well. There's gonna be, uh, some warranty work going on in Nixon Park on the pathway. Um. Wolf Paving did our last, uh, paving contract last year, some areas in the park that we noticed on, on the pathway, so they're gonna be coming back in to do some warranty work on the pathway. We are also still looking for summer help as well. Uh, so if you know anyone, contact the DPW. And, um, as you, as you can see on the background, the Wall of Hills is coming into town. We are still looking for volunteers, especially for the takedown of the wall in Marcell. So if you go to the, uh, Chamber website, there's opportunities to sign up to help with the Wall of Hills. That's all I have.
Tom, what is the approximate pay for the summer help?
Summer help is starting at sixteen. If they return, they get fifty cents, uh, each year.
Thank you.
In addition to starting, yeah.
Yeah, we actually. Eighteen years and older?
Yep, eighteen years older, driver's license. We can teach you how to mull and string trim and do everything else you need to do.
Things are going well at the library. We're prepping for our summer reading program. Um, if you have a second, take a look at the patio by the library. Our great friends at DPW have put together a bunch of new equipment and furniture for people out there. We have two new tables and two Adirondack chairs, and then three patio tables. One of them is wheelchair accessible, so we're really excited to get those out. And now that it's warming up, we'll finally be able to have some stuff out there for people, so.
Awesome.
Yeah.
I was gonna touch on the Wall of Hills, that starts tactically for, in Heartland, it starts May twenty-eighth through June second. That's literally for the beginning, when it's here on trucks and it's not even. Out of the trucks yet, so not set up until it, it leaves, but, uh, Tom alluded to all of that. It's gonna be a very cool thing for Heartland. I did wanna ask, I know we're in announcements, but I'm going to ask anyways, when do the flags go up?
The flags will be going up prior to the, uh. Prior to the twenty-eighth, so we're gonna have those up prior to the actual escort coming into town and everything like that. Yep.
Oh, you know what? I did almost forget one. It's, um, it's National Police Week. And the Village of Heartland is blue in the front, um, so I did, I did put out a Facebook post today, but, uh, you know, I'll just say it here, you know, anybody that wants to show their support for police. Across the country, but especially here in Heartland, um, feel free to change your light bulbs to blue to show your support, so they know when they're driving by, but obviously we've had our, our run-ins with a lot of stuff in the last, uh, few years. But I think it's nice and really appropriate that there's a week that's there to, to, to just show the appreciation. So, um, Chief, thank you, and if you could pass. So, um, Chief, thank you, and if you could pass it on to the department, that on behalf of the entire community and this village board, thank you for everything that that you guys do on a, on a daily basis to keep us safe.